All right. Welcome or welcome back. Called a regular June meeting to order. Ms. Beaman, if you can hold the role?
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn? Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Let's check one more time. Mr. Kuhn's on it, I think he's on it.
Checking one more time for Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Excellent. Would you join the march of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McBullen?
Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight's Latha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it is important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. All right, adoption of agenda. Seek the motion to adopt.
I move to adopt the agenda item 2001 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. We will move on to recognitions and awards.
Well, good evening, everybody. As we move into our awards and recognitions, I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. And first, I would like to invite Westview Elementary Principal Cindy Capeller to the front. And if you have any staff with you, you guys are welcome to join as well. Westview was named as a 2022 Challenge Award recipient by the Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force. Ninety-one schools were named across the state for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishments based on Kansas assessment results in math and reading. The awards recognize Kansas schools that are making a notable difference in student achievement despite facing significant challenges in their school population. Of course, this comes as no surprise to us, as Westview has been recognized before for their incredible achievements. They also received the Challenge Award in 2021. And earlier this year, Westview was honored as a National ESEA Distinguished School by the National Association of Elementary and Secondary Education Act State Program Administrators for bridging the achievement gap between students. We are so proud of Westview and know that these honors are a testament to their amazing staff and students. Congratulations. Tonight, we are also excited to recognize two outstanding science educators. At this time, I'd like to invite Olathe Northwest Physics Teacher Drew Smith and Olathe North Earth Space Science Teacher Stacy Kavanaugh up to the front. Oh, okay. Well, then Stacy, it's your night. Drew and Stacy were two of five recipients in the inaugural Kansas Science Teacher of the Year Award, sponsored by the Departments of Chemistry, Geology, and Physics at Kansas State University. Drew was recognized as the Kansas Science Teacher of the Year in the Physics category, while Stacy was recognized in the Geology category. The award aims to recognize the extraordinary work that is done by high school science teachers in the state of Kansas. What makes this award even more special is that students were asked to name the science teachers who inspired them to study science or made a difference in their growth and development. The nominees were then invited to apply, and a committee selected the finalists. Drew and Stacy, congratulations on this well-deserved honor. We are so proud to have you represented. Next, please join me in welcoming members of our Human Resources Leadership Team, including Dr. LaShelle Segg, Dr. Kathy Donovan, Mr. Eric Hansen, Mrs. Michelle Morris, and Mr. Justin Howe. Tonight, we are thrilled to recognize our Human Resources Department for not one but two honors. Earlier this year, Olathe Public Schools was named to Forbes 2023 List of America's Best Midsize Employers. Coming in at number 12, Olathe Public Schools was the only K-12 school district nationwide to be named within the top 60. In addition to making the National Forbes List, Olathe Public Schools was also named as the number-two public school district in the Kansas City metro area by Ingram's Magazine. Both of these honors are a direct testament to the community in Olathe Public Schools and the work of our HR department to hire and retain quality staff. Through their efforts, we have created an environment that people want to be a part of. Congratulations to our HR department, but also to our Olathe staff and community for helping make Olathe Public Schools a nationally recognized employer and district. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to recognize some of my very favorite people, my colleagues in the Communications Department. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Director of Communications Erin Schulte and Communications Specialist Nick Sola up to the front. I will note that we are missing a few from our team up here tonight. Our webmaster, Marlene Colgan, was unable to join us, and our Assistant Director of Visual Media, Tony Rangel, and Multimedia Specialist Holden Potter are busy at work behind the scenes, live streaming our meeting right now, so they couldn't join us in person. This team of incredible individuals was honored this year at the Kansas School Public Relations Publications Contest in conjunction with the Kansas Association of School Boards. The awards recognize the top work produced by Kansasboro members, and the Olathe team brought home four Awards of Excellence, which is the highest level of recognition, in the following categories: Crisis Communication, Audio and Video for the 2022 Bond Video, District Report Card or Annual Report for the 2021-22 Olathe Public Schools Annual Report, and Website or Social Media for the 2022 Bond Website. While we typically operate behind the scenes, it's my distinct honor to recognize these individuals for their hard work and dedication. I have the pleasure of seeing the amazing work they do to support public education each day, and I'm so proud to recognize them publicly tonight. So congratulations to them.
All right, we'll move on to presentations. First one is from Olathe East. I'd invite Carrie Lane and team.
As Carrie and her team make her way up here, I want to take the opportunity to thank you guys for allowing us some time tonight to talk with you about the 3D program at Olathe East High School. It was a little over a year ago. We came before you to talk about kind of the timeline and implementation for the program that would be implemented in the 2022-23 school year, this past school year. So we thought we'd come back and give an update of what we've learned, how it went, and the progress, and maybe plans for the future. So with that, I will turn it over to Carrie and her entourage here.
Good evening, and thank you for having us back tonight. We're excited to share where we're at in year one. Like Dr. Albert said, last year at this time, we were finishing year zero, and we are now getting ready to conclude year one. And so we wanted to share from not just my perspective, but from the greater Kansas City junior achievement perspective, and then also from the student-teacher perspective, how things are going in about 10 minutes. So we're going to go through this pretty quick, but I wanted to start off by just sharing that this wouldn't have been possible without the help of the Olathe School District, without the support of the 3DE program, and especially not the support of Junior Achievement of Greater Kansas City. And Megan and Kate are here, and I'm going to turn it over to Megan just in a second. But the support that they've provided for us, the excitement that they bring whenever they come into our building and into our school district, keeps the teachers, keeps me, keeps Dr. D-Dash excited, and we couldn't ask for better partnerships. So I'm going to turn this over to Megan, and Megan's going to just remind you a little bit about the program and the corporate partnerships. Good evening. As Carrie mentioned, I'm Megan Sturgis Stanfield, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the president and CEO at Junior Achievement of Greater Kansas City. Rewind, three and a half, four years ago, I learned about the 3DE model. It is a national junior achievement 3DE opportunity. And I said out loud at a conference, "We're going to bring that to Kansas City." And my team knows, when I say something, we usually find a way to make it happen. So we are very pleased that Olathe, particularly Olathe East staff, was willing to raise their hand, be a guinea pig, a pilot playground, and I think we are beyond pleased. I'm actually overwhelmed by the first-year experience that we've had with Olathe East. So as a reminder, 3DE is a model that really looks to systemically change and redesign the high school learning environment. We want it to be more relevant and authentically connected so that students are really prepared for life beyond the classroom, but also really ready to embark on all of life's adventures, and maybe on the side, experience helping teachers fall in love with teaching again. So that is done in a true public-private venture. So we need the school district partner, and particularly the school. Junior Achievement is a key player in that piece, and then the business partners in our community, individuals, companies, organizations who are willing to come and really bring the authenticity and bring the model to life. I have the great privilege of just reminding you that the methodology and the learning model that is used within this program is a competency-based model. And so our students, if they go through the program all four years as a cohort, will have the opportunity to complete 17 case challenges by corporate America, not just nationally, but also locally. Megan's going to come back up and share with you some exciting news on that front in Kansas City. But every single competency that our students learn is weaved into every case challenge, not just the challenge itself, but also in the standard core curriculum that is being taught. And so I wanted to share with you, these are our six competencies. The students I'm bringing up to are freshmen, but I'm sure they could tell you if I asked them to name all six of these, and they'd be able to do so. So we're weaving in these competencies through the case challenges, and then weaving the case challenges in through our educational standards by the state of Kansas. So it's heavy lift. It's a different way of looking, but none of our students have to take another elective. There's not a lot of after-before or after-school kinds of commitments. What they're getting is an authentic, work-based experience, and they're getting employees of all of our corporations and national and local businesses in their classrooms, modeling for them, answering their questions, and helping them through these case challenges throughout the way. So I don't want to talk a whole lot more, so I'm going to turn it back over to Megan. I want her to talk about the exciting things on the business partnership front, and then I'm going to have my teachers and my students speak a little bit. Yeah, so really, the way that this comes to life is through the authentic connection. So the business partners, the volunteers that join the students at the school, and helping them put together their presentations, their pitches. And then really impactful that they provide real-time feedback when the students are presenting at the culminating event. So there are six of those during the freshman year and six of those during the sophomore year. This is a national model. We are one of 10 cities that are participating in the model. So I will tell you, Dr. Yer, I don't even think I've mentioned this yet, but when the national CEO of 3DE was here, having a conversation, we all sat down. Him and his counterpart walked out of the district office and said, "Megan, there's something really special happening at Olathe East." And they have seen 3DE in the model across the country. So there are currently 42 schools involved. So these national partners are activating case challenges at each of the schools. And then Junior Achievement is actively engaging in local partnerships so that the students can see right here in their own community where can they find career opportunities, connect, bring that social capital to life. I know when I was here last time that they were really hopeful that the Chiefs would sign on. I have not yet inspired them, but we were very successful to bring on Sporting KC for this next year, and just a number of different industries that are really bringing a lot of perspective and presenting high-growth career opportunities to the students so that they can really start to think about what does life look like beyond the classroom. This is my last portion of the presentation, so I just want to say thank you for believing in innovation. Thank you for partnering with us. This has really been a dream to work with Olathe and Olathe East, Carrie and the team, and the teachers and the students. Like, I have been so excited to welcome outside visitors to come and look at the model in action. I think it has inspired some friends in Iowa to sign on the dotted line and bring this to their school after a visit to Olathe East, and very excited about where this might be able to grow in the district in future years to come. Thank you. Now, who you really want to hear from? I'm going to introduce our pioneer, a group of three teachers. This is my freshman team, a biology teacher named Darian Ogden, a social science teacher, Will Buller, and a mathematics teacher, Caitlin Foster. And they're doing the heavy lifting every day. They're the ones that are taking the challenge and meeting the expectation, flying the plane while we've built it, to be quite frank. And I want them to talk just a little bit about what 3DE's done for them and the perspective they've had. Okay, so I'm going to take the first bullet point here of what it looks like in our classroom. This is probably the number-one question we get from a lot of people about 3DE. And to be quite honest with you, it doesn't require us to reinvent the wheel or anything like that, which is really nice, especially when you're kind of building the plane as we fly. So the competencies are soft skills, the employable skills that we want all of our students to have when they do graduate from high school. I do think subconsciously, teachers are teaching these, but the 3DE model allows us to be really intentional with those skills. And so the way that intentionality comes into play is how we end up planning our lessons and our instruction that's in the classroom. So if any of you did come, I think it was December, we were able to kind of showcase some of the things we are doing in our classroom. And so if you don't get the opportunity and you would like to, I highly recommend coming in. So what those things could look like is, for example, if we're talking about creativity and innovation, in my class, I could ask my students to come up with two polynomials that create a particular sum. In science, I know this year, they had a project where they were doing a sustainable housing project, which was very creative. It was very cool seeing all of those presentations. And I know in Mr. Buller's classroom, when they were talking about World War I, they talked about the propaganda posters. And so his students had a project to make propaganda posters for Olathe East in terms of like, "Why don't you inquire?" or "Why math and science just happens to be the worst enemy ever?" And so that was really cool. And it's really nice because it just really enhances and complements what we're already doing. But it does challenge us to think outside the box to really benefit all the stakeholders that are involved in a particular class period. So I'm going to turn it over to Darian, and she's going to do the next two bullet points for you. Okay, so when we get our case from JA, it's got a competency built in. So I put our little board out here. We pretty much live and die by this board, especially as we learn. So I know not everybody can see it. But we sit down in PLC, and they'll say, the one out there is your competency is cultural agility. And it's the Arby's case. And the Arby's case was all about the customer experience and improving that for 13- to 17-year-olds. So we sat down and we looked standards. What standards do we need to teach? And then we look at our competency. Okay, we need to get cultural agility with our standard. So then we go through by content and decide how in our class we're going to do that. This was one of our strongest ones and our best this year because cultural agility basically means like dealing with others. Bad days, good days, they look different, are different. So what we were able to do is sit down, and I was on infections and cells and things like that. So then bouncing to Caitlin, she needed to work on exponential functions. As it would turn out, infection follows an exponential function. And then with Mr. Buller's class, they were right at the tail end of World War I, which is when the Spanish Flu occurred. So we were able to hook all those together and then turn around and talk about that experience, and then translate that for our students into Arby's and allow them to be creative and just work through it. So that's one example of the six we did here.
Now, I want to talk about the teacher experience. Everything you're taught like in school when you become a teacher and how kids learn, you talk about how you guys integrate interdisciplinary curriculum, and that's what we do here. The teaming aspect of being able to talk with each other and work with each other, sending kids to one another and say, "Hey, what are you working on, and how can we work on this together?" So when she talked about how we did the Spanish Flu and how the exponential rate and infections go with math and science, we did that in my class. And really, it's when you talk about these things, you think if it's a great idea, but at other schools, it's really hard to do that. Doing this as a teaming model and being able to do this together with the same kids makes it really, really easy to implement and do as a group along with the other kids as well.
I have two amazing students that are freshmen, and they've been two of our year-one students. I'm going to have them talk just a little bit about it from the student perspective. You have the wonderful Isaiah and the wonderful Ayesha, and they're both going to talk a little bit about the next goal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Isaiah Peterson. I'm going into my sophomore year at Olathe East, and I'm in the 3DE program. So what does the classroom look like? A 3DE classroom looks very similar to what a non-3DE classroom would look like on the surface. But once you dive into the class, you're met with a tightly-knit group of students and lessons being learned and displayed in a way that does not occur in a non-3DE classroom. Students in 3DE gain experience in public speaking, teamwork, and many other things. I don't know how in-depth they've gone with what case challenges include, like the day-to-day basis, but it lasts about a month. We've partnered with companies like Arby's, Mark One Electric, Delta, Blue Cross Blue Shield, BMO Y and R. And then next year, we're partnering with Sporting KC. So the company will give us a challenge question, and then we are assigned to groups of three to five, in which we are tasked to come up with a unique solution for their problem. We have a few weeks of work time, and then after that, we're met with internal judging, which occurs in each classroom. And groups present their solutions to the class, and then the best groups out of everyone will be chosen to present at the culminating event. And then we'll have judges come in and people from the company come in, and they'll judge and decide the best group. So to me, 3DE is like family. Everyone in 3DE at Olathe East knows each other. This helps make group work, such as the case challenges go very smoothly. 3D has helped me with so many things, including public speaking and more. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ayasa Hernandez, and I'm an upcoming sophomore in Olathe East High School, and I'm in the 3DE program. So in every case challenge we work in, we have a coaching day. It is when employees from the company we work with come to our school and help us with our solutions, and they give us more context to the situation of our case problems. And students like me and Isaiah also ask them for more information about the case that would help us conclude and come up with a working solution. So so far, my experience with 3DE has been excellent. It has made my learning experience more fun and definitely more engaging, as I was able to express my creativity and critical thinking into our cases. Being in 3DE helped me improve my confidence when presenting in front of other people. I also gained a lot of friends who have helped me with the cases and people that I enjoyed working with throughout the year. Thank you.
And for the sake of time, we brought some data, and I'll let you guys take a look at that. We score above the national average on all of the survey responses that we've done this year. But I wanted to let Dr. D-Dash just talk to you a little bit about our specific cohort, and then we'll wrap up.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the board for giving us the opportunity to be here today. Basically, a part of my role every day is to meet with Sharon Ahuna. I want to give a special shout-out to Sharon Ahuna. She's our 3DE representative who's housed out of Olathe East. So I work with her on a daily basis. We basically dive into the data that the teachers provide us with, and some of the indicators that you see up there. On the left side that you will see is our cohort overview. And the reason why we included that was to... 3DE wants our 3DE cohort to be a mirror of our student population. They want it to look exactly like what our student population looks like. So that's why you see there on our demographic side that you see it mirrors very closely as far as what our freshman cohort was this year. On the right side, those are indicators that we're looking on on a weekly basis. This is a very broad view of it, but we're constantly monitoring individual students on how they're doing. And those are the indicators of attendance that you see right there with the rest of the 2026, the rest of the freshman cohort. You see the discipline numbers that we're looking at. That is, those are numbers. You will see the 12 out of the 66 discipline. We had the SES numbers, and of course, our GPA, we're right there with the rest of them. The big piece that we're always looking at for our freshmen is the percentage of the credits that they're earning throughout the year. And you see that we are right there with them. We're constantly looking at other indicators as well. We're constantly looking at other indicators as well. You know, the common assessments that we're given are, for example, biology is giving our 3D cohort of biology, how does that look like with regards to non-3D students? We're always comparing those data to make sure that we are building on our areas and strengths and addressing our areas of opportunities.
I do need to brag. Every year, we take a case challenge that's a national case challenge and we send it off to the national level. And like was mentioned by Megan earlier, there are currently 44 schools in the state, in the nation, sorry. We tried for the first time, it was the Arby's Case Challenge. There was a first, a second, and an honorable mention, and Olathe East received honorable mention on the very first time out. So I have to brag on this group. We've had, like Megan has said, other states come in to see what we're doing in Kansas based on this program. The other piece, I will say, and then open it up for questions, is that this program is one of the first that I've ever been a part of in 28 years of education in this district that does and brings the support with it. Like Artie said, Sharon Ahuna is in our building, PLCing with our staff every single day, and that's how they have time to weave all of these competencies, standards, and case challenges together. I also have students who have never seen anybody of a different ethnicity in my building that are, for the first time, seeing people out in the corporate world, coming in and coaching them on the different aspects of their business and their corporation. So it's opened our building up to different community experiences, not just the students in 3D. Next year, we're adding three more sophomore teachers as this cohort moves up. We go from four to three. We're bringing in another 130 freshman students in. Our attainment rate, we started with 130, we ended with 126. And all of those students are heading onto 3D for their sophomore year. So we're proud going into year two. We're excited to see what these sophomores do and you could see a sample of them tonight. Questions for any of us?
Thank you. No, that's just impressive and I appreciate everybody's hard work. Questions?
I have a few questions, actually. So the first one, you mentioned three content areas. Is that, and ELA?
Yes. ELA couldn't be here, but all four are.
Okay, I saw a four on that. Freshman sophomore year, what happens junior, senior year?
Great question. Junior year, junior year, they are actually picking a business and running through several different scenarios with that business. Senior year, it's much like a capstone project in our 21st century programs where the students will go out into the business world and partner with one of these employers that we've been working with.
So is there a component during freshman sophomore year where they actually are at the workplace?
Glad you asked, yes. How many times have you guys gone out? Four? Four? Been to, where did you all go? Do you guys want to share? Mark? So the employers will sometimes, if they can house 125 kids, they'll let us come out and take over their space and we'll get to go and view the company and the corporation. Megan, anything to add?
One thing to add, so I'm working closely with the Kaufman Foundation to start to map the lovely market value assets that I know everyone is talking about, not only locally, but now at a state level. So what we're working on is basically identifying freshman and sophomore year during the 12 case challenges. Those would basically map to client connected projects. Junior year is really an entrepreneurial venture, so we could get the entrepreneurial MBA. And then senior year, we call it a consultancy. So they will work on a 12 to 14 week project with one specific company, which I believe equates to also the equivalent of an internship as well. So I believe, you know, per Kaufman definition, we can check three of the four boxes. And Dr. Yeager and I have talked about, you know, that they're even more at the state level that we can potentially back to as well.
And one more. How are the students selected?
The first year, they filled out an entrance inventory and we took everybody. The second year, we've had a larger swelling of students, but there is, every student that wants in gets in. And that's great for my master's schedule because I don't get any extra FTE, so I need as many kids as I can get in the program.
And I will share that that was one of kind of the rules of being a partner within the model is that if we really want to drive systemic change, this has to be a model that can reach and support all learners, not your top 10%, not your students who are really struggling. So we really challenged Carrie and team to find a way that when we look at the cohort, you know, against the 2026 cohort, how can we try to mirror that? But there's no applicant, there's no like interview process, you know, nothing like 21st century academies. If you raise your hand and we inspire the parents at the eighth grade level to participate, then we will welcome you into the model.
Thank you.
Those are great questions, Dr. Yeager. Anybody else?
Yes, others?
I just want to say how exciting, kind of makes me want to go back to high school. What a really cool program. And these six core competencies, what amazing skill sets to be teaching our kids, no matter what they end up doing after high school. These are skills you'll take with you. I remember being in a math class in high school, wondering what, you know, what do I need this for? So was it Caitlyn, the math teacher? That, you know, I Googled polynomial. Is that right? And you know, when you read the definition, it's not real exciting, but the fact that you're putting it into context, that's real world learning. That's very cool. So excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, hello again. Twice in one night. I am pleased to be here tonight to talk to you guys about the results of our 2023 district parent and staff surveys. And as you guys know, one of the goals of our district is to continually seek input and feedback from our stakeholders to help inform our decisions and just help us to kind of check in on ourselves and hear from our community so that we can always make sure we're making the right decisions with our stakeholders in mind. This year, we opened our annual staff and parent surveys during the month of March. And if you'll recall, the spring was pretty survey heavy with our work around bell schedules and transportation. And so despite that, we were still really pleased to see that our participation numbers remain just as high as they had in the past. So that was really great. Before we dive into the actual results, I want to just take a moment to remind you guys of a couple of the ways that we seek and receive input from our community. So obviously, we have our annual survey that we send out each spring and that serves really as a benchmarking tool for us. We keep the questions the same each year and so we're able to go back and compare and contrast from previous years, see what growth areas we have and again, areas for improvement. We're constantly assessing our social media sites, any direct messages we receive. So that's kind of an informal way we receive feedback. We have formal email surveys that go out, our website. We can put a feedback form on our website. You'll recall with our Bell study, we had a specific feedback form just for that. So we were able to receive feedback that way. Oftentimes, if there's a special project or event, we may send out a survey following those to get specific feedback. And then our department also manages our communications inbox. And so we receive a variety of questions, but also thoughts, feedback that we monitor regularly too. So this year for our parent survey, we had just over 3,400 responses and that is almost 1,000 responses more from last year. So that was great because we love to hear from our families. We want to hear from our stakeholders. So to see that participation increase was really great. We had parents from all three levels and early childhood represented, as well as all buildings. And parents with students in multiple levels were also represented. And thanks to our IT department who helped put the survey together, we were able to get some data that drilled down by building level as well. So now for the points of pride, this really is an overview for you guys of some of the highlights from these surveys. And so we had several points of pride that I wanted to draw your attention to. As we go through these, the red portion is going to represent the combined total of folks who responded as agree or strongly agree. The light gray is neutral responses and then the dark gray is disagree or strongly disagree. And one of the things that really stood out to me was that that disagree and strongly disagree, for the most part, you're going to see as less than 10% across the board. And so that was a really proud moment for me to see that that's a pretty minimal slice of the pie going through these questions. So first, when it comes to learning opportunities, we had 85% of our parent respondents say that they are satisfied with the learning opportunities provided to their students and that was no change from last year. So that remained the same. 71% said that diversity, equity, and inclusion are valued in their district and that was a 4% increase from last year. And then 79% said that the leadership at their child's school is effective, which again, was a 2% increase from last year. So we love to see those positive jumps. 85% of our parent respondents said that their child has a high quality and effective teacher. Again, no change from last year, so we were able to maintain that high level. 85% said that the Olathe Public Schools provides safe and secure learning environments and that was a 5% increase from last year, which is one of our highest jumps of the various questions that folks answered. And I think that's a real testament to Mr. Keiger, Dr. McMullin, the work that they've done this year around safety and security from crisis alert implementation and then just really some concerted efforts to keep safety top of mind through some video communication efforts with staff and families. So I think that's a direct reflection of those efforts. 82% of our parents said that Olathe Public Schools compares well to neighboring school districts, which again, was no major change from the previous year. And as we think about the conversation around school choice and that conversation in our community, I think it's great to see that Olathe continues to be a top notch district that compares well to our neighbors. And while I love to focus on the positives, I think one of the great things about survey feedback is that it also brings to light some areas of growth and opportunities for improvement. And so we'll go through a few of those here. And while we do that, I'm really going to focus on that light gray area for all of these, so those neutral responses, because to me, that's where the opportunity really lies. This first one, the district is preparing students for success after high school. Clearly, we just heard from some rock star students that we're doing some great work to prepare them for success, but we have about 26% of folks who responded neutrally and I'd really love to move the needle there. So to me, that's a communications opportunity, really highlighting the work that we're doing in our district to provide those opportunities for kids, whether it's our academies, 3D, so that we can help educate our parents around what those opportunities are. I think that 26% could also reflect maybe some of our younger families who don't have kids at the level yet, who'd be engaging in those programs or opportunities. So there's a variety of factors, but I think we have some real opportunities there to move that needle. The next one, the district provides high quality, social, emotional learning. We had 64% of folks who agreed with that and 21% neutral. Again, an opportunity for education around maybe what SEL is and what it isn't for our community, so just helping them understand what SEL is. And then also partnering with our schools. You'll see later on that a lot of our parents respond that they get their information at the school and teacher level. And so maybe having a counseling corner portion of their newsletter where they talk about the SEL work going on in their building and making sure that we're focusing on the academics, but also sharing out that SEL work as well. And then finally, the district provides quality mental health services. We had 60% of people strongly agree or agree with that, which is actually an increase from last year, so wonderful, but I think there's still room for an improvement. Again, that 28% of neutral could be folks who don't engage with our mental health services, so they don't feel comfortable answering one way or another, but it could also be reflective of education and just wanting to make sure that people understand what services we offer. For our staff survey, we had just over 1,600 staff respond. 72% of those were certified staff and 28% identified as a classified staff member. And just like our parent survey, we had staff from all three levels represented and all buildings, including our support buildings represented. Some points of pride on our staff survey, 68% of staff responded that they are satisfied or very satisfied with their job. So about two thirds of folks. Again, that 19% neutral, we'd love to move the needle on that so people could really feel strongly about their job satisfaction. 72% said they were proud to work in Olathe Public Schools and 70% said diversity, equity, and inclusion were valued in the district and that remained the same from the previous year as well. New this year, we added this question on a sense of belonging. So I mentioned, we really try to keep our questions the same so we can benchmark each year, but we did add this question around a sense of belonging. And I think for an initial year, we were super pleased to see that almost two thirds of our staff responded, agree or strongly agree that they feel a sense of belonging. And I think that is a testament to Marquis Harris, his Department of Culture and Belonging and the efforts that they've made around that initiative. He's had his Culture Setter podcast this year. They've developed affinity groups, groups for staff and they've had the Culture Setter cohorts. And so I know he's made some real intentional efforts on that sense of belonging for staff. And then just like our parent survey, we had a 5% increase in safety and security among staff. So 75% said they feel like they work in a safe and secure work environment. Some areas of growth for the staff survey, even though I mentioned the sense of belonging as a strength, I also think it provides an opportunity for us. Again, that 23%, you know, we recognized our HR department earlier and clearly, we have a nationally recognized district where people want to work and we would love for that 23% to feel strongly to say, yes, I want to be here. I feel a sense of belonging. So moving that needle on those neutral responses. 55% of staff said that they have the resources to do their job, which is a slight decrease from last year's responses. And I think that this could be a variety of factors. It could be new initiatives that staff have been asked to tackle. I also think if you look nationally, just in the K-12 or the labor market in general, there's labor shortages. And so if you think of resources in terms of human capital, I know that we continue to find challenges to staff our support roles and so that could be part of that as well. And then finally, 47% said the district provides high quality mental health resources and support to staff. Again, that 37% may be folks who don't engage in those services, but as always, we can look at this as an education opportunity to make sure people know and understand what's offered to them. Okay, this is my favorite slide. Communication. So we asked folks to respond to the statement, I get the information I need from Olathe Public Schools. And I think these are actually flip flopped. I think it's 89% of parents agreed or strongly agreed that they get the information that they need and 91% of staff agree that they get the information they need. But as a communications professional, that makes my heart real happy to see that people feel like their schools in the district is providing the information that they're seeking. And they get that in a variety of different ways, but you'll see that email continues to be the primary way that people receive communication. As I mentioned earlier, parents get that more at the local level. So the school email, classroom teacher, but also district. Staff get district and supervisor emails. Our website continues to be an information hub for both audiences. And then on staff, you'll notice the in the know newsletter. We launched that last year. It is our weekly newsletter to staff. And so in our second year, I'm pleased to see that it continues to rank highly and our staff are finding value in that weekly communication that they receive. We also had an opportunity to provide some open feedback. And again, nothing here really surprised me. I think if you look at the landscape of K-12 education, both locally and nationally, I think these are themes that you're going to see emerge nationally. And so Olathe Public Schools isn't immune to that either, especially when you see things like pay and compensation, staff morale, burnout, workload. Those have been things we've kind of been hearing about for the past couple of years, just in the landscape of K-12 education. When you look at When you look at the cost of living, the rising cost of living, and wages kind of remaining stagnant, again, those are just not surprises to me that those rose to the top. Building and district leadership was a mix of positive comments from individuals who have really positive experiences with their principal and want to give them a shout-out in this forum, and then also constructive feedback for both district and building-level leadership on just decision-making on big initiatives. Student behavior, again, a national conversation. I think we're hearing that our teachers continue to face challenging behaviors in the classroom with students and class size. Those were some of the top themes that emerged for staff. In our parent comments, I was very pleased to see that just general positive feedback rose to the top. These comments were very specific to each person, so it could have been a thank you to the district for what you're doing, you're doing a great job, my child's principal is a rock star, I love our third-grade teacher, my child's getting the support they need, so I just couched those as positive. But we also saw diversity, equity, and inclusion rise as a theme, and that could be anything from wanting to see an increase in diversity among our staff, which we know is an initiative among our HR department, wanting to create equitable opportunities among schools, so that no matter what school in Olathe your child attends, you know that they're going to get the same quality education regardless of where they're at. And inclusion, creating inclusive environments for both our students and our staff. Academics and academic rigor, of course, we are a school district, so parents wanting to make sure that academics continue to be a priority of the district. We saw earlier that question about preparing students for their future. That was a theme that came up, making sure that we're challenging our students appropriately, that they're being prepared for whatever post-secondary experience they might have. And then, there were specific comments around different content areas, so science, social studies, math, that all fell within the academics category. Technology, again, kind of a mixed bag of positives and just individual experiences. It wasn't in the previous slides, but we did have 82% of our respondents say that they felt like we have quality technology in the district. So, that positivity was reflected in the comments, along with personal philosophies on screen time and traditional academic instruction, personal experiences with devices, all of that. And then, just like staff, class size was one of the concerns as well, making sure that our staff have the support they need to manage class sizes as well. So, next steps, our senior leadership team has all of this information and has either reviewed or is in the process of reviewing it to help guide our decision-making moving forward. As I mentioned, we do have school-specific information, so that has been provided to our GA team, our general administration team, and they'll be sharing that with principals to help guide their decisions moving forward as well. And as I mentioned at the beginning, this continues to be a priority for us, so we're going to continue to survey our staff, survey our parents, seek feedback, because we want them to be partners with us in whatever decisions that we make. So, we'll continue this process, and certainly, the annual survey will continue every year. With that, I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, and thank your team for all of the hard work and diving through this data. Questions from the board?
I'll start again, I guess. Could you remind me, the number of staff that responded, 1,600, what percent of staff is that?
So, we have about 5,000 staff members.
Okay. And then, did the survey lend itself in those areas such as growth or sense of belonging to disaggregate by level and by classified and certified staff?
We certainly would be able to do that. We didn't do that at this level, this was just an overview, but I'd be happy to get that information for you if it's something that you want.
Okay. I think that would be something interesting for us to see, and, you know, the example that you gave about the response about students being prepared for their future and perhaps, you know, was influenced because of elementary, so to be able to see kind of how the responses came by level, I think would be helpful.
We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have a similar question to Dr. Jorkovich. So, I'll let her have those, but I do want to make a comment. It's interesting, you know, as we talk about learning loss from COVID, and then have feedback from our parents that says academic rigor is now starting to be on the top of their mind. It's, you know, sort of a signal to us that, you know, maybe they have come out of that phase, and our parents are ready for their kids to be challenged further, so we can continue pushing them and make sure that they are prepared, so.
Yeah. That's a great observation. I will say the word "challenge" came up quite a bit when I was reading through the open feedback, although when you look at the multiple-choice questions, all of the ones around education, educational opportunities, learning opportunities, most all of them ranked 80% or higher. So, I think people are pleased, but as you said, are continuing to keep academics at the top of mind and just want to make sure that we're challenging, challenging all students.
Absolutely. Others?
Can you remind me, Becky, is, I think I filled this out as a parent, but I can't remember, is there a place to put your name if you want it?
So, it's an anonymous survey. The only opportunity you would really have to include your name is if you included it in the open feedback portion, but other than that, it's completely anonymous.
Okay. Good. I was just going to say, if somebody had included their name and had some pretty grave concerns, is there a way that senior leadership can respond to them? But they'd have to provide their name for that to happen.
Yes, and certainly, if anyone did, and that was the case, that is why we provide that school-level data. I also provide it on the staff side to any classified supervisors as well. They all receive that open-ended feedback, so if something would come to the top as a concern to them, or if someone had listed their name and asked for follow-up, they'd have the opportunity to do that.
And many times, too, the concerns come back to the email, not the survey. So, a lot of times, somebody responds to the email where the survey link is sent and said, "I have a concern," and then Becky and her team work to make sure that gets to the right person. That's pretty frequent whenever we send a district's email out.
Great. Thank you.
Others? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
So, I didn't, I didn't want the moment to pass, but I didn't want to say this till the end, because I didn't want her to be nervous, but that was Becky's very first presentation in her role to the Board of Education, and she did a great job, so.
We will move on to public comments.
The Board of Education reserves limited time during its regular meetings for individuals to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room when requested by the board president. When beginning your address to the board, we ask that you please share your name, the city where you live, and what schools your children attend or have attended in the district. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when their three minutes has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. We ask that speakers refrain from discussing complaints involving individual staff members or students if they have not been previously addressed to the district administration. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, audience members are not allowed to speak, yell, or give applause during public comments. This ensures the board is able to listen and then transition to the next speaker. Please note that those who disrupt a meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Our first speaker, Thomas Gregor.
Thomas Gregor, I live in Olathe, and I have one son at Brum Elementary. Dr. Jaeger, members of the board. With the school year at a close, I believe it's appropriate we take stock of the previous school year and look forward to the next. To that end, I intend to speak to disruptions in the classroom, learning environment, and the resources needed around our district. During the past year, the classroom environment was often noisy and disruptive. This is not a comment on the work of our teachers, paraprofessionals, or special educators. Rather, we are, our staff are outnumbered by students who did not receive sufficient support throughout the day. While most of the time a para is present in the classroom to assist students of special needs, they are often overwhelmed by the number of students needing emotional or educational support. The staffing may be within the collective IEP guidelines of the students in the room, but is insufficient regardless. Piercing wailing tantrums on the floor, general noise, and other disruptions occur on a regular basis. My son's impression was that his classroom was quiet enough for focused learning just half the time. While his experience may not be representative of most classrooms in our district, it is clear in talking to parents and staff from other elementaries in the district that our experience is not isolated. The district is currently seeking over 200 paraprofessionals across its schools and centers for the USD 233 job application website. Some requests are for a school year just ended. Numerous others were opened recently, many due to apparent resignations. These positions are mainly hourly, with starting rates of 15 or 1625 per hour for a seven-hour workday, or 19,000 to 21,000 per school year. Given the challenges these roles represent and compensation offered, it seems highly unlikely the district will fill close to the totality of its positions, leaving some students without adequate support and contributing to disruptive classroom environment overall. A goal of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, and its amendments since its passage have been about meeting the needs of our special-needs students in our classrooms and providing them with the resources they need to succeed. Over time, schools have moved many of these students away from spending a significant portion of their day in special education classrooms, like my own school district in the 90s. These students now occupy the general classroom and socialize with their peers more often, but they require numerous additional paras for support. I am not here tonight to promote an older model, the current model, or a new model. That is something for the district to solve. I simply ask these questions. Does pay need to be raised to prepare for professional positions? Should student composition within classrooms be reexamined in light of available resources? Do IEPs need to be reevaluated? And ultimately, what should be done to restore order in our classrooms? I am concerned for the coming school year, and I hope the district and this board will seek answers to these questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Megan Bricks, and I just completed my fifth year of teaching. I can proudly say that I have spent each of those five years teaching elementary general music here in Olathe in the exact same classroom that I student taught it. I was extremely lucky to be given the opportunity to teach here. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you all tonight. As an educator, it is extremely important and valuable that I am able to speak my voice in front of you all. I never once thought that I would be the educator who shows up to each board meeting and speaks during public comment every month. I began attending these meetings and speaking to stand up for the educators and students of this school district, but I had begun to realize that it means so much more than that. Educators, parents, and community members see and hear me each month, and they, they hear me taking a step outside my comfort zone. Those same people have expressed to me personally how thankful they are to have me speaking up for those who are not here to represent themselves. They have told me that I have made a difference in their life. I have had my very own students in my very own class tell me, "Hey, I saw you on my TV last night," as I discovered their parents were watching the livestream of the meeting. Making the time to attend and speak during public comment each month has truly made a difference in my life and hopefully, the lives of students and staff here in Olathe. As educators, one of our primary focuses is helping our students find their voice or their passion. As an educator at a leader-in-me lighthouse school, we utilize the eight habits within all areas school-wide, from math to music to recess to science to library. Each and every day, we teach and model these habits for our students. As our students discover their passion and find their voice, our role as the educator is to seek out and provide them opportunities to use their passion and then step outside of their comfort zones. You, as the Board of Education, have provided me the opportunity to utilize my passion of advocating for educators and students while speaking during public comment each month. Why don't we see more of this? I wish that every month, there was a line of parents, educators, or community members standing in this exact same spot, stepping outside of their comfort zone to advocate for their children, or their family, or their colleagues, or themselves. I am so proud of the students who tonight showed up to use their voice to impact their educational experiences here in the Olathe Public Schools. Public comment is a place for people to use their voice to better our school system. I hope that you, as the Board of Education, continue to actively listen during public comment, and I hope that we can continue to use this time to work together to prepare students for their future. Thank you for allowing me to stand up here each month and use my voice. I appreciate you listening to my thoughts, as well as your responses to my emails, as I bring forward my thoughts, concerns, and celebrations as educator here at the Olathe Public Schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ann Matier. All three of my children graduated from Olathe Schools, but I'm here tonight as librarian at California Trail. I have just completed my 34th year, and I still love what I do, and I have a rock star principal. And I've been honored to work for a district all those years that is repeatedly recognized for its excellence and commitment to student success. There's a wealth of research on the importance of reading, and it leaves no denying that competence in reading skills and fostering the love of reading is one of the greatest predictors of that student's success. Fortunately, I see this district systematically dismantling our library program, not only in the removal of secondary library clerks, but more importantly, in the refusal to hire an experienced credentialed library coordinator. In all of my years here in Olathe, last year was the only year we've not had a credentialed library coordinator. Because library science is such a niche role in education, few understand its rigorous complexity, we need a credentialed librarian to provide leadership, vision, and when needed, advocacy with groups such as yours. We need a credentialed librarian overseeing our policies and practices. We need a coordinator to run screening interviews so that principals who don't know our specialized library skill set have a vetted list of people to choose from. We need an experienced person to interface with our book, automation, and database vendors, as well as district technology who supports those platforms. We, 51 librarians and libraries in this district are not autonomous, but rather, we are interdependent with over 10,000 titles traveling between buildings this past school year. Your 51 librarians require and deserve specialized professional development. This is not committee work, nor can we expect three facilitators to add to their already tremendous workload. Case in point, just last year, I circulated 1,200 books out of 500 classes in my library for checkout or instruction. I wrote 28 new webpages to support learning on top of maintaining 50 existing pages, and I amped up the district's Trail Challenge Reading Program so that 27% of the students at California Trail actively participated. Heaven forbid, oh, my point is that no one person, or even group of three people, can take on the demands and duties of a full-time coordinator. Heaven forbid that we face another formal book challenge here in Olathe, but in the culture and climate we live in, we can almost expect it. The district would be vulnerable without a coordinator who is well-versed in the American Association of School Librarian Guidelines and Recommendations for Book Challenges. We have several highly experienced librarians in the district who would excel if promoted to coordinator, librarians who could support the 51 of us in our uniquely daily, our unique daily challenges, and who could deliver the level of oversight, vision, and leadership only a certified library coordinator would provide us. I implore you to provide us with a credentialed library media coordinator. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Cottington. I'm a parent of students at two of our Olathe High Schools, and I teach science at Olathe East. I am here tonight for my LGBTQ family, for the transgender students that I worked with this year, and for the kids that come into my classroom seeking a safe place to exist. It has been one complete school year since the district produced guidance related to gender identity. In the face of many concerns, Dr. Jaeger shared at our December 21 board meeting that we would never have the intent to out students to their parents, and that this document really, truly was intended as guidance and not as policy. Having seen this play out for a full school year, I can attest that the guidance is a de facto policy and has caused harm for our students. The guidance says that staff suspected to treat students to respect preferred name and pronouns, but to seek parental consent before using them publicly. What happened is that students that don't have parental consent were not supported and have been addressed by their dad. and have been addressed by their dead name as a normative practice. Guidance says that we prohibit discrimination against any student for any reason, including gender identity. What happened is that if I have a student named Craig that wants to go by Junior or by Ryan, that's fine, and a kid that's named Marie and wants to go by Annie is fine, but a kid named Alexis needs permission to go by Andrew. Guidance says that parents and eligible students could submit a request to amend educational records to update gender and/or name in our educational system. What happens is that that form is no longer available as per my counseling department today. Parental permission can grant a nickname now in synergy, but to change the actual name in synergy, we now require supporting legal documentation. Name and gender changes in Kansas might be illegal beginning July first. Guidance says beware of incautious disclosure of students' gender. What happens is that in synergy, student grade level and gender information occupy a single display field, so anytime a grade level is on display, so is the gender information. Substitutes also might inadvertently use students' dead names because the dead names are how the system is rostered. Nicknames aren't a default setting. I have to speed up, I'm sorry. As students bravely struggle to be seen and recognized for who they are, peers pick up on the discord when someone is misgendered or deadnamed. Repeatedly correcting a teacher or substitute is hard and serves to invalidate our transgender students. It also sends a message to all the other students that being transgender is a problem. I sought information from our diversity department regarding how the impact of SV one eighty might have, and I think it's too early to tell, but parents should and are concerned. I believe that our board and employees want to do the best for our students, but it takes work. My work was when I tried to follow this guidance this year. Now we need to reassess and adjust until our guiding documents uphold equal access and equal protection for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Solomon Desta?
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak here. My name is Solomon Desta. I'm the father of a student that goes to Olathe South High School. Was given a name badge of the N-word engraved with a copper metal jewelry metal clip, so I'd like to speak up on behalf of him. Today, I'm standing before you as a parent who is heartsick because of the discrimination that my son has faced because of the color of his skin. He has been called the N-word, a racial slur that has been used to dehumanize black people for centuries. I'm not here to ask for your pity or sympathy, but to raise awareness about the issue of racism in our society. My son has been hurt, humiliated, and agonized because of his race. I cannot imagine the pain he felt when he heard that word used against him. As if... As if he were less than human. No one deserves to be treated that way, that it happens all too often to people of color. We need to acknowledge that there is racism in our society and take meaningful action to combat it. We cannot ignore the fact that black people are disproportionately affected by hate crimes, police brutality, housing discrimination, and many other forms of prejudice. We need to educate ourselves, have conversations, and take active steps to create an inclusive society that values diversity. I want to say to my son and his friends, Kruve, Jomari, and Ebon, I'm proud of you guys for your strength and courage in the face of discrimination. I want you to know that you guys are loved and valued and that you deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. No one should ever make you guys feel less than who you are. In closing, I urge all of you to speak out against racism and to be allies to those who are marginalized. We need to create a society where everyone can live with dignity and equality, regardless of their race, ethnicity, or religion. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Robin Wilson Cale?
Good evening, I'm Robin Wilson Cale. I have three sons, one of whom has already graduated, one will be a junior, and the other one is a freshman this upcoming year at Olathe South. Our family comes from a history of slavery and veterans. One of our ancestors, who was a slave, was sexually assaulted by her owner. When he was done with her, he sold her for twenty-five cents. My grandfather and uncle fought for this country to make it a better place for all of us, including their family. My grandfather, who was a sergeant in the US Army, fought in the Korean War and was shot and ended up passing away at the age of thirty-three from his injuries. My father attended the first integrated school in Chillicothe, Missouri. This is just part of our family's histories, which is not taught. We live an uncomfortable life every day. I'm tired of hearing it might make someone uncomfortable to learn about our ancestors' history. We learn your ancestors' history, why is our history less important? Without us, your history would look a little different. We are all here to create the best lives possible for all of us, and we must work together to achieve this. Parents received an email from Superintendent Dr. Jaeger on May fifteenth about, quote-unquote, "an upsetting incident at Olathe South that involved the use of a racial slur among students." Two days later, at Chisholm Trail, my eighth-grade son was called the N-word during PE class. When asked, when he asked the other student why he called him that, the student replied, "I don't care," and started to swing on him. The student admitted to the principal that he had called my son the N-word. I saw Dr. Jaeger during the walkout at South, and I mentioned to him that I was the mother of the child who was called the N-word at Chisholm. His response was, "Yeah, I heard about that." A month earlier at Chisholm, a student made a video, which I have, using the N-word and sent it to the whole entire eighth-grade class during school. Not once did I see an email go out to parents concerning this situation and how the district was going to handle them. These types of incidents happen way too often and are frequently ignored with the hopes that it will go away because it makes people uncomfortable to talk about it. I attended the walkout at South along my sophomore to let my children know I will protect them, stand by them, and find a way to make their school safer, a safer place for them. I never thought I would have to make school, of all places, safer for my children, let alone because of the color of their skin. I shouldn't have to worry about sending my young black children off to school and whether they will be safe. School is for educating our children's minds, helping them to grow into successful people, and guiding them into the next stages of their lives, which is adulthood. Every time you sweep their concerns under the rug, ignore a student's outcry, pretend like it will go away or be forgotten, that's another teenager that possibly gets depression, becomes suicidal, or finds another way to handle their problems, and I think we all know that way. Every time you ignore their concerns, you become part of the problem. Teenagers feel as if no one understands them, no one listens, nobody cares. Some factors that cause depression in teenagers are having issues that negatively impact self-esteem, peer problems, or long-term bullying. Suicide and homicide are the second greatest cause of death among teenagers. Do you really want to be their reason why? What if it was your child? What would you want to see done? We can choose to be a part of the problem or a part of the solution. We are all human beings, and skin color should not be a factor in any part of our lives. It's time to get uncomfortable and do better for all of our children. We need better policies in place in all Olathe Schools and stricter consequences for these types of incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Denton?
My name is Judy Denton. I've lived in Olathe for over thirty years, and I must admit this is not really where I want to be tonight. But I would like to see this board begin to work together. In my opinion, everyone serving up here should be above reproach. There should be no questions concerning conflicts of interest, financial or political gain, or whether or not the board is following its own policy. There should never, ever be an appearance that a member is being silenced or targeted. And while I admire Mr. Connell's passion for children and consider him inspiration, I was very upset and deeply disappointed by his reactions in May. But I strongly believe that every single board member is equally responsible. Revisiting just a few of the board meetings, I quickly recognized the pattern. Mr. Connell would try to initiate a genuine dialogue. Ms. Steele would motion, Mr. Beveridge would second discussion over Mr. Connell's silence. At any point during the previous meeting, any member could have chosen to do one of two things: to deescalate. First, you could have simply answered the question, "Did the board follow its own written policy concerning information or the formation of the Ethics Committee?" Yes or no? Admit it was an oversight and just move on. Second, seeing Mr. Connell's growing frustration, the board could have also called a ten-minute recess, but instead you chose to deny a break, pointing gasoline on a fire. Every day, teachers are threatened and face classroom battles and literally come out bruised and scratched. The board voted to censor an elected board member because he yelled and someone felt unsafe. Maybe because of my experience being a pharmacy manager or maybe just raising three children, being yelled at does not make me feel unsafe. The overuse of this word minimizes those who are in very real danger. However, given that Mr. McConnell was acting like a whistleblower, exposing the board's inability to follow their own policy, I can imagine how a board member might feel uncomfortable. Somehow, without violating coma, five of seven members prepared written statements to censor Mr. Connell. How safe and valued do Mr. Coon and Mr. Connell feel? Even during the special meeting, Mr. Connell respectfully asked to be able to respond last as a rebuttal. He was denied because, and I quote, "we," meaning five of seven members, "already decided the order before the meeting." Honestly, from the outside, every single one of you looks like a bunch of middle schoolers with their cliques doing petty stuff to just antagonize each other and assert some sort of dominance. And Mr. Connell unfortunately makes a very easy target. I think all of you seven need to read Seven Habits of Highly Effective People together and then take a very hard look at your role in this total fiasco. Mr. Connell at least publicly owns up to his own mistakes and strives to do better. Will the rest of the board please do the same? Thank you.
Thank you. Carabelle Solomon?
I think it was my turn? Is this on?
Yes.
I'm Carabelle Solomon. I'm a sophomore at Olathe South High School. Good evening. Tonight, I'm hurt, and I've been hurt due to the fact that I am a student who has been victimized and has been struggling in this district's environment for some time now, all based off the color of my skin. I don't believe that in any case that is correct for anyone to feel so confident in their environment that they use school materials to carve out a racial slur, so I'm here so I can once again be heard on all of these matters. Tonight, I am addressing you all, the board, on race-based issues within our schools. Growing up, I without fail have experienced racism, hate, and ignorance at all three schooling levels. I never understood the gravity of what was going on around me until just recently. I've come to a realization that the environment in our schools is extremely harmful for students on multiple levels, and I'll gladly share examples of that claim for you all. For as long as I've been here, students have been teaching each other ignorance and hate, causing kids to lose their self-confidence and hate who they are based off of their features. What's also scary is the lack of education on racial matters, whether that be on a staff level or at a student level. From my experience, I do not believe that teachers are adequately trained to teach a diverse curriculum or have a classroom environment where students of all statuses feel safe to learn and express themselves. Yet still, at a student level, the curriculum does not do a good enough job teaching kids their identity and their proper history as a student of color or giving all students, regardless of status, proper education on race-based matters due to the fact that this district has banned books teaching things such as critical race theory. Change needs to happen. The narrative created by the American education system has catered far too long to the downfall of black students. This dictionary has also catered far too long to the hate and ignorance directed at these students. The status ignorance has created a home for actions like this to take place at their schools, and the negligence from administrators and district officials has led come down to this. This has become increasingly alarming. How can we trust a district to educate us when they refuse to protect us? Finally, as a student who's been victimized by this environment, I am firmly asking you all to do the following: Make harsher punishments for hate-based offenses, provide mandatory training to all teachers on diversity matters, and changing the curriculum to stop only teaching black failures, including more diversity in the general curriculum for all classes as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patty Lanter?
I'm trying to chop this up because some of it was repeated from a prior speaker, and I didn't want to do that. Okay. So, I'm a parent and concerned taxpayer that reads and thinks for myself. I was also taught actual logic concepts and ninth-grade math. It is a travesty that this is no longer being done in public school. If any of what I say tonight sounds impossible, I urge you to start reading today. I can give you sources, or you can listen to those who have escaped communism such as Xi Van Fleet. You hopefully are unaware, but need to get up to speed now, especially if you don't believe it is happening in the US, or review the Four Olds of Communism where, in the Chinese Cultural Revolution, where up to eighty million people died. Children were pitted against parents and elders that did not go along with the state narrative. Olathe is not unique in that these tactics occur in most public schools across the country. Wherever you see the castle wheel or portrait of a graduate, or notice many buzzwords like... Castle is the main culprit here. But the expansion of Head Start is rooted in Marxism as our community schools with health clinics. It is not for anyone's convenience. The revised history textbooks in the queue for tonight paint a rosy picture of Marxism and the Communist Manifesto. They decry capitalism and individualism in favor of the collective. What it does not say is that communism leads to death every time. It also does not mention the existence of the elitist chosen class that silences the voices of those that disagree through censure and gaslighting. Today's neo-Marxists are interwoven all throughout our society in plain sight behind the smiling faces and soft voices they show in public, backed by the tax-funded money of the self-feeding K-12 collective, unions, and other agencies. Using Marxist techniques of double meanings for words does not change the actual truth. One of these is unsafe. I won't repeat all that the previous speaker stated regarding the unethical actions of the majority of this board. Discrediting and silencing is another tactic of Marxism for any thoughts opposing the collective. They are more concerned with ideology and shaping a Marxist culture rather than one based on individual achievement. A microscope is placed on the differences between people through DEI and the very nature of equity. We need equality of opportunity, not equity of outcome. An ethical false premise of every question on transformative SEL and DEI survey tonight that was shown given by the district assumes that we want SEL at all when we do not. The questions can only be answered as affirmative that SEL should be there. This is an intentional technique. As you state in the document, you see this as a communication opportunity. Does that really mean re-education opportunity? Use this instead of as a mandate from your actual customers. We do not want this. Give the Fed money back and remove the Marxist tool from the entire curriculum. It is not the school's job to shape values, especially political Marxist values. It's a deceptive practice designed to keep unsuspecting people in the dark. Local media is used in this way also. The goals of Castle are to transform a child's thinking to sheer collectivism. I've wondered why many teachers send their own kids to private school. And it looks like I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. David Brox?
Good evening, Dr. Jaeger, and other members of the board, and people and students who are gathered as a unified community tonight. In sociological and anthropological studies, civic responsibility is a key component of cultural and social life as we know it. Civic responsibility is a task that begins with you, and it is up to all individuals to exercise this accordingly for the defense against injustices and for kindness to spread at a proper proportionate rate. The instances of recent racial hatred and bigoted attacks are some of the most demoralizing instances that minority students within Olathe and any community have to go through. To be part of a marginalized... To be part of a marginalized group and to have your parental figure educate you on what to do if you yourself are met with this hatred is one of the most important times of one's life and a core memory of the beginning of adversity during one's academic trajectory. Due to unfortunate recent events of social justice, the student body, faculty, and members of the community have been impacted by the multitude of situations to take place within Aletha and surrounding communities. As a community with multiple instances of different minorities, Aletha as a community needs to tear down the empathy gap that is disconcertingly plaguing our community day by day. To revisit my previous point as well, combating injustice and microaggressions is an example of civic duty. Civic duty and civic responsibility are two concepts that are intertwined, and rather than blatantly disregarding this fact, the change needed for our community requires all voices and the joining of forces as one unified entity to achieve the life that we so desire for our community. Think not of your current students, but rather the ambit of future students, young children to adolescents, everyone equally affected. I come to everyone tonight to remind you guys of the simple fact that unity takes communal harmony. Civic duty and responsibilities are a must, and it is my hope for Aletha and Johnson County as a whole for a change in this mindset. And as the United States Pledge of Allegiance states, this very flag right here, liberty and justice for all, and this very saying starts with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Van Busker?
Good evening, esteemed board members. Carrie Van Busker, Aletha parent of a student who recently graduated from South and an incoming junior. I'm also an advocate for students through Families Together. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I haven't spoken publicly in this forum until tonight regarding my son's autism or our experience because frankly, my son masked throughout his time at Aletha. He hid his disability for most and would slip in and out of resource throughout middle school and high school, praying that he would not be seen. Ty shared that students with disabilities were often treated as less than by peers and mocked or taunted, thus he tried to appear neurotypical. I wanted to share with you all a brief summary of our experience as a family with an autistic learner served in our schools. We must do better. During his elementary years, I worked diligently to ensure our team understood how to effectively implement his sensory needs in an inclusive manner. I worked closely with our teams to ensure he was not isolated within his general educational setting. For instance, I found him sitting at the end of a lunch table with other special education students surrounded by pares and witnessed himself isolated and bordering outside of the playground perimeter, not knowing how or supported to enter into purposeful play. He was just left to walk alone, all by himself, all throughout recess. I was able to successfully advocate for changes in these practices at that very time. This was nearly ten years ago, but it still happens on our playgrounds and our lunchrooms still today. While I sat among many families in celebration as my son walked across that stage last week, I too rejoiced in his accomplishments, and I credit many excellent teachers and staff that effectively taught him along the way. That must be commended and acknowledged. I don't blame them for not knowing that he had an IEP at all until parent-teacher conferences year after year. I blame a failed systemic practice in school culture. I don't blame teachers who failed to implement his accommodations so that he could access his advanced classes. I blame an entire system that needs more support, knowledge, and training. We must simply do better. To my shock, I experienced an unexpected trauma response as I heard my son's bully's names called to receive their diplomas that night. While I do believe that these students matured and grew more compassion over the years, we as a team and a school district failed. We failed to protect my son from trauma during those formative years. My son has received frequent and at times intensive mental health treatment due to the trauma that he endured through his fourth and eighth grade years. Note, he was in third grade when we moved to Aletha. We must do more to efficiently address bullying and to provide more social skills support to those that need it. I leave feeling exhausted and relieved that he survived. I was hoping to leave jovial and accomplished, but I haven't. We have to do better.
Thank you. And I'm going to apologize if I get this last name wrong in advance. Deborah Kaleka?
Hello. My name is Deborah Kaleka, and I am a 2023 Aletha South graduate. And recently, I have been taking the time to reflect on what I have taken away from my experiences as a student in the district. And without a doubt, the teachers I have had have shaped me academically in numerous ways. I've run as a student, and I know moving on to the next part of my life, I will have invaluable resources in South staff. However, no matter how valuable those academic experiences were, they will never outweigh the damage that being a minority in a predominantly white school did to my self-confidence and ability to stand up for myself. Minority students in this district condition themselves to accept comments and remarks on their differences to avoid conflict, and that conditioning takes years to undo. Schools are preparatory in more ways than academic, and unfortunately, my school and the district at large have failed to foster a safe environment and in turn have failed to foster fundamental life skills in the bulk of their students. This is not just a South issue. This is a district issue, and it's a state issue, and it often goes unsaid. However, we have been lucky enough to have had a student come out with his experiences, and the actions as a result of that were satisfying, and it felt like finally students' voices had an impact. However, those actions were also short-term solutions, and without a long-term plan, there will always be other incidents, no matter who the principal is or who gets suspended. The problem is larger than that. It is the culture of South that will allow this to happen over and over again. As it is the school, the district, and the board are all failing minority students and allowing for ignorance to continue to harm the very individuals it is your job to protect. I want to know what the long-term plan is. What will you do to ensure diversity is something celebrated instead of ridiculed? Because taking each issue one by one will not solve the larger problem. Students don't think racial harassment has consequences. How will you work to change that? Students participate in racial harassment because their education lacked and continues to lack sufficient diversity. How will you address that? This problem is multifaceted, and I, along with many other concerned community members, am anxious to know if you understand and are willing to do the work to begin to make a genuine change for the well-being of hundreds of students who feel like it's in their best interest to suffer in silence and wait until they can make it out. It's your job to both prepare students for their future and protect them, and currently you are failing. How will you fix this?
Thank you. Spencer Titus?
Hello. My name is Spencer Titus. I live in Lee Summit, but have several family members that live in and attend Aletha schools, so Aletha is part of my community. I strive to love my community fiercely and unapologetically. This is why I can no longer, in any good conscience, stay silent about the violent patterns of racist behavior that have been exposed in our Aletha schools. White supremacist ideologies and the use of the N-word by white people need to be immediately addressed and disciplined in every and always the school board has authority. I have been greatly moved by hearing the words and bearing witness to the actions of the Black and Brown students and parents that are taking a stand to facilitate change in our schools. I know that our community needs to reckon with the violence that has been experienced by Black and Brown students, grieve and process the trauma that has been done in the halls of our educational institutions. While Black students need the time and space to unlearn the white supremacist ideals their peers and school culture have forced on them, white community members, including students, faculty, and administration, must be unlearning our racial superiority complex. As far as the actions that need to be taken by this board, the Black Student Solidarity Network has offered their time and emotional energy to list out the steps that you can initiate to make our schools safer and more equitable for all students. What an incredible gift. The path forward has been laid out for you already. We eagerly wait to hear your commitment to enact these necessary changes. More specifically to the white members of the board, we have an opportunity in front of us. Each of us has a choice to make. There is the choice to stay silent, perhaps a choice of comfort led by fear. Just keep my head down and avoid the conflict by disconnecting from those being harmed in my community. This is a choice to continue in the participation of the racist violence happening in our schools. Silence is compliance. But there is hope in another choice, one informed by love. We can love our community enough to stand alongside the Black students demanding change. We can prioritize bravery, compassion, justice, and connection, not just for our students, but for everyone in our community that has felt racialized harm. There is no middle ground between these two choices. Fear or love, it's in your hands. I want to leave you with this quote by a revolutionary white community organizer, Ann Brayden. "The battle is and always has been a battle for the hearts and minds of white people in this country. The fight against racism is our issue. It's not something that we're calling on to help people of color with. We need to become involved with it as if our lives depended on it, because really, in truth, they do." Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. We're actually going to take a five-minute recess.
Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing and really focusing on building wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, and so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So the students have the ownership and choose in the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Thank you. So we'll move to the consent agenda. If there's anything that anyone would like to pull off?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to separate 6.03 from the rest of the
I would like to separate 6.03 from the rest of the consent agenda, please. Have a separate vote on that.
Okay.
I don't need to pull out 6.05. I just have a question for Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay.
So if you want to pull it out so I can ask, fine. Otherwise, I can just ask it.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you. I just have a brief question on accounts payable. Do you, can you answer whether a board member has taken a vacation on taxpayer dollars?
No, they're not.
Thank you.
Since we're on that, Mr. Hutchinson, could I ask a question since Miss Steele brought it up? So when board members travel to an SBA event, those are funded by taxpayers, is that correct?
No, they're paid out of our Gifts and Grants Fund.
So Gifts and Grants Fund?
Yes.
Okay. So who provided that money into the Gifts and Grants Fund?
That would have come from Johnson County Community College.
So the attendance by board members or staff were paid for by money coming from Johnson County Community College?
Correct.
A taxpayer-funded entity? Correct.
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or tuition-based also. I mean, there's a combination of both.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
How do you want your motion?
Yeah, we can either do all but 6.03, or we can just do 6.03 now and then take the rest.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items, not all except for 6.03 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Okay, then I would seek a motion to approve the minutes. That would be 6.03.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item-
Mr. President, could I make a comment before the board votes on something that may not, that might not be within board policy to protect the board on their vote?
Yeah, I mean, what we'll do is we'll have a motion if there is a second, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 6.03 as presented.
Second. Okay. Mr. Connell?
So, Mr. President, my concerns with the approval of the minutes is that not in its essence that they are minutes, it's that they miss a lot of content. And the minutes call out an action that was not available to the board. The Board of Education does not have a board policy to take action against an existing board member in censure or in any way, shape, or form. So while the meeting, you can have the meeting and you can have minutes, the action taking in that meeting were against board policy because no board policy exists. So the creation of board policy on the fly in that action. And the board, I did ask for the special meeting that if you all felt so strongly about your comments that they would be included and published with the meetings. And if I can tell directly from what's actually in the agenda, that none of the board members felt so compelled that their information and their commentary was strong enough to be included in those board minutes. So what I'm worried about is that the board would vote to approve minutes for actions that were not within the purview of the Board of Education to take. So that's why, that's my concern, that the board would be voting on approval of minutes for something that they did not have the power to even do.
Mr. Boyd?
I would just say that the board has the power to govern itself. The board could function with zero policies in place. The board could vote to suspend all their policies.
But that would take a vote, would that not correct, Mr. Boyd?
It would, but again, we could, we could function with zero policies in place. We don't need a policy to say we can do X, Y, and Z. The board governs itself. And there was a motion on the table. The motion was debated.
Mr. Boyd, there was no debate, they were statements?
Okay. There were statements made and the board took action.
Yeah, I believe this question has been asked and answered.
So the board meeting in particular, the action, was not identified upfront, so it's not disclosed publicly the discussion or the action and the presence of the information. And some way, multiple board members, more than three, that makes it a coma violation, would have taken action and had statements prepared in advance. What I'm concerned about is that the conversation is about board policy, following board policy. The board, while you say the board could act without any board policies, that's not how the board has been structured or has worked and operated for a long period of time. So the board policy is our governance. It's written in our board policies that it is our governance. And if we want to change policy or create policy, it is the board's responsibility to vote to change or modify board policy prior to taking an action.
That's not, that's not accurate.
Correct.
And I would also say that, Mr. Connell, you also had a statement prepared that you read that evening. And I did not have a statement that I read that evening, so...
You did have a statement. You just said that I, you chose not to read that.
That is incorrect. I did not have a statement.
You said you're not going to read your statement.
I did not say that. You should go back here and look at the tape.
Well, unfortunately, there was no tape that evening because the board chose not to videotape the materials, but the tapes do show that. We can proceed with the vote. I'm just saying that I'm just going to make sure we're careful.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to clarify. Mr. Pittman, can you answer a question as relates to disclosure of our meeting and how that was handled and if we are, I hate to put you on the spot, but if we follow state statute in our disclosure of that meeting, please?
Yeah, you bet. By chance, could you ask that and get some insight?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Connell raised, and he can, he can restate it, but he alluded to us not giving disclosure or not publicly saying what we were going to, the action that was going to take or possibly take at that special meeting that we had.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah. Now, that, I mean, in my opinion, the notice was appropriate. It comes down to the date of the, the date by which, by which the meeting is posted, which, which was within or without, outside of that, that time period. And it can be waived by a majority of the board anyway. But no, I think the, the agenda that's posted just needs to be basically clear.
Thank you. So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you at any time provide any consultative information with the board members in preparation of that meeting?
Mr. Connell, I'm, I don't want to dodge the question, but I know that you are represented by counsel, and I sat in a meeting with you and your attorney and two others. And unless I have the authority of your attorney to talk to you about the substance of that, I, I have an ethical duty not to discuss this with you unless your attorney is present or I have something in writing permitting me to do it. And I am more than happy to sit and talk about that.
So I'm curious, you're referencing a meeting in which you stood up red-faced, slammed your hands on the table, and yelled at my counsel with me representing a disturbing action.
Mr. Wickliff?
But my question, you're referencing that, but I'm referencing-
I have a point of order.
-the board meeting.
Mr. Boyd?
I'm referencing the board meeting and you, the question was specifically-
I move that we call the question.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bean?
Now, just so, just so we clear, the vote that we're voting on right now, this call of the question, is to vote to decide if this discussion shall continue or if the discussion shall be over and we'll move on to the motion on 6.03.
Correct.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Okay, clarification. A yes vote means that-
We will move to a vote.
We will move to a vote, yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Okay, motion carries five-two. Mrs. Bean, on 6.03, I have a motion by Mr. Boyd and a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five-two. Moving on to Section 7, we need to adjourn to executive session. How long do you think?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing salary, benefits, and related items of the bargaining unit pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:55 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion carries, you need to speak.
Hey, what's going on in Madison Place Elementary School? It's no great here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal and I'm still working on it. So thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona. Such a blessing and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest here. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of your year.
Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing and really focusing on building wide expectations but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to, there's certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walk by, they notice the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
All right, we will continue on section eight, action bids, contracts, and agreements. Want to talk a little bit about eight dot zero one, the 2023-2024 negotiated agreement. We'll pull that one out separately and any board members that have comments, but I just wanted to say a couple of things off the top and just thank you to everybody who worked so hard to pull this together. You know, there are some things here that we've talked about since I joined the board and prior, so, and that's been eight, almost eight and a half years. So, just a huge thank you to, to the team and everyone who participated in those negotiations. And I think it's a, it's a win-win. And it's just June, so. I don't know if anybody else had any others, but if not, I'll seek a motion.
I just had a question for Mr. Pelangi on page one four. It'll be brief.
Okay.
Mr. Wickliffe, I would like to echo what you said about the negotiating group. I said in, I want to say, I said in executive session, I don't want to say it in public, is the, between the bargaining unit and the, the group from the district, very professionally done all last year, over the last year, amazing camaraderie between both sets of groups, all working towards something that could be successful for all of them. And, and I want to make sure I said it all, because not everyone got to see all those meetings, but they were very well-run, very, very well-managed, both teams working, and it's really, really big hit. This isn't November, this is June, five months ahead of normal schedule. And so, great kudos, if you were in the bargaining unit of any kind of role, you can be very, very proud of the work you guys did over the last year, so.
Well said. Mrs. Steele?
So, Mr. Pelangi, can you just briefly explain for those of us who maybe have never built a house, let alone built a middle school, what, how change orders happen and how they come about? And then, what exactly, that we aren't waiving future discussions about change orders, we're simply waiving it being part of future action so that you can go ahead and procure supplies before they increase?
That is correct. So, as any part of construction projects, we have a set of documents and specifications that go out, and that's what the contractors bid on. But at the time, there's, there's no really perfect set of construction documents or specs out there. So, we hold a contingency back for change orders that happen during the construction. And it ranges from unforeseen soil conditions to some changes that our owner directed in the field or jurisdictional changes as well. So, we hold that back to make sure that, that we have enough to cover for instances like this that come up that we're presenting tonight with some structural steel modifications that we need.
And by waiving it being part of future action, we're just approving it ahead of time so that you can get your supplies purchased before they continue to ask?
That is correct, and to maintain the, the construction schedule, that one.
Great, okay, thank you.
Mr. Pelangi, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So, I like that idea, right, being proactive. Is there a threshold if a change order, most of the change orders, you know, the policy says over twenty grand, right? The ones who are approved today, in the scheme of a sixty-million-dollar building, fifty thousand or twenty thousand are not significant. Are there any types of change order structures that historically that you said, that's so huge, we really ought to bring that before the board, that you might say, hey, I, I need to go ask? Or, or that we would have a special meeting, because you know, a special meeting can be called, we can vote by paper to say, right? Is there any level that gets so big that?
I, I haven't encountered one in my timeline that's here. Some of the things that could possibly happen was some of the stuff we encountered at the beginning with some subsurface soil stuff that we can't really account. We tried to with all the previous inspections and surveys that we do prior to construction, but some of the things that kind of pop up, those would be the ones, but other than that, really.
And those you would likely see where we would ask to waive future action and putting those right as actions, so.
Yeah, so we could continue to have tickets.
Would, as we, if we vote on this and approve the waiving of future action kind of stuff, would you still be providing a monthly updated report on the bond things?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And I support it, like, it's a good idea.
I move to approve action biz, contracts, and agreements number eight dot zero one through eight dot one five as presented.
I second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Connell.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. President, Mr. Hutchison would like to say something about eight point one five.
I just wanted to point out and thank Mr. Hestert and Mr. Charlesworth for their work on the insurance renewalization. You can see from the length of that agenda item, it's a very complicated process. The reason I wanted to do that is Charles and his brother Bob are getting out of the property liability side of consulting. They've, they've been our consultants, I believe, for twenty-eight years, so I just wanted to thank them for all the service they've done. In case you don't understand how that works, we have a broker, but they've always sort of helped us translate what the broker says. So, it's, they've been a tremendous help, and over the years, I just wanted to thank them.
Echo that, thank you, well said. All right, as many of you know, we had a special meeting before the meeting to need to approve the republished budget for 2022-2023. I would seek a motion to do so.
Move to, to adopt the amended general fund budget per the publication notice of May twelfth, 2023.
Second.
Second, yeah.
You're a little late, Rob. I've got a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Future action items, as always, I know I sound like a broken record, but if you've got questions, please forward those to Dr. Jaeger as they come up so that we can make sure that we get you accurate answers.
I, actually, in, in preparation for next month, do you care if I ask Mr. Pittman a couple of questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with regard to revisions to the code of student conduct and specifically surrounding, I think it's enumeration, there was a policy there, we've made some changes, and can you speak to that to help explain behind why, why we made the changes?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll try to.
Or proposing, I should say.
Yeah, the proposals, and I'll try, attorneys aren't very good at being succinct, I'll try to be succinct. We, you know, the, the code of student conduct goes to the board annually for y'all's review and hopefully adoption. This year, we, we, we convened a committee that I, that I led, and there was, there was some others in this room, Dr. McMull, Mr. Albers, Mr. Tiger, Mr. Johnson, Matt Johnson, and also some administrators at elementary, middle school, high school level, and also Mill, Mill Creek. We met in April with an idea, we, our code is, is in good shape, but, you know, it could certainly be improved, those kinds of things. And we met in April and then met, met again actually last week or, yeah, about a week or so ago, and it came up with the version that came to, to all of you. So, one of the, the changes that was in there was particularly with the bullying section. And there is a Kansas statute that specifically defines bullying. It requires our, all school districts to, to have a policy that prohibits it and a plan and training and those kinds of things for, for students and staff. So, also included in that, in, in the current code was also some language prohibiting essentially conduct geared to a student because of their sexual orientation or something, you know, some other classification. And that language was essentially moved over towards harassment, moved to harassment. So, harassment in our current code is a class, is offense two. We have one, two, three, four, four is the worst, one's the least. Harassment was a two, bullying is, is a two presently. And the code that's before the board, hopefully to be adopted later this month, bullying has remained a two, and the, the language that you, that you mentioned, Mrs. Steele, has kind of been wrapped into harassment, which is a class three, and, and under the, under the code that's going to be actually before you all hopefully the end of this month. So, I hope I answered that without too much gobbledygook there, but I think I got there. Does that help?
Can I repeat back in very, very layman's terms?
Sure.
See if I got this?
You bet.
So, the idea that harassment of a, by a student, of a student that is classified as LGBTQ is going to be handled under, that bullying is going to be handled, handled under harassment, and it specifically spells out harassment of different groups of people?
Correct.
And that's actually a more severe offense than how it's listed now?
Potentially, correct, yeah, yeah, that, that's right. And there's, there's also another piece of this where, where bullying requires, one act of bullying, one could be severe enough potentially to be high bullying, but it's also severe and, or pervasive. So, that's kind of conduct over time, that's bullying generally. Harassment could, could be a one-off type, type scenario, which unfortunately, the student here, you know, is describing, the horrible thing that happened with him. So, that's, that's right. And I should just add, whereas the, the difference between a, and right, right now, our, our administrators have options under each class, each of offense, kind of a, and options on, on discipline. You know, so, the difference between a class-two offense and a class-three, the options on, on discipline are almost identical. Class-three allows for expulsion, which is a student being out of school, out of school days for more than ninety days. And so, a long-term suspension is ten to ninety days, which is under class-two, that's the most you could have. Now, under the code that would be presented, that is presented to all, to all of you, expulsion would be now under class, is still under class-three, but harassment is under class-three.
The class-three, got it.
I hope, I hope I.
No, it's very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
No, you're welcome.
Mr. Mr. Pittman, does, removing the enumeration, does that allow for our administrators to create a gray area, whereas something was spelled out in our policy and there was really black and white? Does removing that language allow for some different interpretation of that part that was removed?
You know, it potentially could, Mr. Boyd. I'm trying to think, think through that a bit. You know, one of the, the, what I, my view of a code, you want it to be specific enough that folks know what they can and can't do, and administrators know what they can or what they should dis, disport. On the other hand, you don't want it to be so strict that our administrators have no options in terms of dealing with things. There's only really, the only offenses that have no options are guns in school and dis, really guns in school, that's a year, that's, that's federal law, state law. Coming back this way on all the less severe punishment, administrators have a lot, a lot more discretion there. And I, as I, as I shared with Mrs. Steele, if there's, if there's some tweaking that needs to be done with, with harassment, as it's worded, you know, in the code that's before you, to make sure we cover that, 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 that concern, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I would, and this isn't for you, but I would just say, I would just say, removing language that would create or have the potential to create a gray area, where we, we heard tonight, you know, some of our students haven't, and those interpretations of whatever that process has looked like for those students, hasn't left them feeling heard or seen or respected or valued. I think that would lead to more of that type of experience, removing that specific language from our policy. It's just something to, I know this is a future action item.
Right.
Something to think of mine as we move forward.
And Chris, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to ask questions, but the, the wording that's now in the harassment policy wasn't in the harassment policy before, correct?
Correct, we added some language there, correct? But there is, let me think here, I don't have it in front of me right now, to go up here line by line. It has been changed a bit, Doc, Doc, Dr. Jaeger, it has a bit. It's some of the same, a little bit different. We added more, which covers, the one that comes to mind is sexual harassment, it's changed a bit more there, and the sex discrimination, sex discrimination aspect that, that gets into harassment.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
This is really, so, it's a future item, we'll vote in July, right? So, if the board, is that, or is it?
We have a special meeting at the end of June.
Well, it's not yet identified, okay. So, in a future meeting, as you work through it and that kind of stuff, one of the things I know is, we've got a new school, this school year starts in August, right?
Right.
So, this could be changes for a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators and staff. Is there, and I don't know the answer because I wasn't here when they're done for it. Is there, and I don't know the answer because I wasn't here when they were done for, is there a grace period? Is there a training period? Is there an understanding period to make sure that all of the staff, administrators, and students are fully aware of, for instance, like harassment moved from two to three? How does that typically work? I don't know.
Yeah. So a couple of things. So this is good. You guys are getting all the questions out of the way at this meeting, right? So the way it typically works is we do an administrative retreat in the summer with all of our administrators, where we'll update them on policy things and what have you. One of the things that is in the works right now through conversation, and part of it is even to echo what our students shared with us tonight to some degree, is our expectation has always been that our administrators, at the beginning of the year, spend time going through the Code of Conduct with our students, talk about, you know, what are the level ones, twos, threes, and fours, those kinds of things, talk about related consequences. But one of the things that we're talking about is preparing kind of a fundamental baseline for everybody. And we've really left that up to the schools where, you know, we say to our administrators, the expectation is that you go and review the Code of Conduct. But with these changes and also some of the recent things that have happened in our district, we really feel like we probably need to have almost a presentation we put together so we can guarantee that everyone across the system receives the same information, both our staff and our students, as they're in those situations. Because we feel like these changes are important enough to warrant that, but also some of the experiences that we've had recently, that we need to be able, as a school district, to say, we know with 100% certainty that everyone received this information and is well aware of the changes. So, so that answer your question?
Oh, yeah. That's exactly what I was looking for. I didn't even know you were going to say that, but yes, the education process, the making sure, because accountability, you know, there's ignorance, and we heard some students say that, ignorance of racism and stuff. But we've got to eliminate the function of ignorance from our students, our staff, and that is a big, big step. So when you said that, I was like, yeah, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Well.
Dr. Jaeger. And I will expect that there will be no further discussion on this matter when we vote on it.
I can't make any promises.
Yeah, I know. I know, Mr. Boyd. And that's perfectly fine. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to look at the written information, and Mr. Connell brought up, again, just that, the bond issue and that written report that will continue to get updated. We'll move into topics for discussion, if anyone has any.
I'd like to start if I could.
Mr. Connell?
So our librarian, I'm just, I'll check in, Emma Tier spoke earlier, and I, and I hear what she's saying. My mom had a master's of library science, and, you know, throughout her career, people always thought, well, you're a librarian. And I think there's a lot of value in understanding exactly what they do and how they do it and how they support our folks. And I was happy to be, if I remember correctly, I was only, the only board member that actually showed up for the book challenge this spring that Ms. Bishop and others invited me to. And so the work and time those librarians in the various schools put together for those, and with those kids, and to get them reading, that was a room full of exciting energy. Dr. Jaeger was there that day as well. And I think that's one of the things that we always have to be, you know, look at every person that works with our kids, not, are technically educators. The second thing I wanted to kind of bring up is, and I did meet some of the folks in the hallway when we took a quick break, is that along with preparing the kids for what, and making sure there's a baseline that everybody knows what harassment is, we really do have a fundamental need to put something in place at the earliest ages around respect and dignity and kindness and understanding how to draw each other together. I have been researching a lot of that stuff. I've shared on my, my public spaces. I've shared with the district as well. I'm pleased with the activities of Dr. Jaeger and others to engage and look at, right? One of the structures I was looking at is a K-12 program. It isn't going to make everybody happy on the left or the right, but what it does is it really focuses on diversity without division. And if you want to go look it up, it's moralcourage.com. I have been reading their books. I've been getting certified as one of their folks. I was well that I'm paying for that. I think it's really important that we all do everything that we can, both on the stios, in the district, but with our kids, to make sure that they're understanding the kids with disabilities of any kind, and how does that work, and how does it mean to include them, the kids with any racial background. I heard a lot about black kids, but we have Asian kids, we've got Latino kids, we've got kids of every kind who experience biases and prejudices against them economically or where they came from, or we really, we're in a situation where we have an opportunity to do better, right? And I, that's one of the things I know we've talked about for the last year and a half, and I, I really, I'd invite the board, this is something we could do together, right? I think we're all on the same page that our kids matter to us. And every kid should matter to us. And that's one of the things, right? I respect those kids and those parents and those teachers who got out and said, this is enough, and walked out of the school and got on the news and raised cane, and it spoke tonight, right? That's just one of those things that I know that we can do better. So those are my comments for this evening.
Others?
I just briefly-
You just jumped in. I was about to going once, going twice.
I know you were.
You were about to-
We're not quick with you, Shannon. Yeah. Just really quick, I just have a couple of things. First of all, that we have the written reports from Head Start, and I'm always amazed at their daily attendance is always 90% or above. And we're talking, you know, littles. So I just, I always want to shout out that program and great things that are happening there with Head Start. And thank you for everybody who's involved in that. And then also to Travis Plangi for our written report on the bond updates. The playgrounds look amazing. I drove by a couple just randomly, wasn't trying to, but I did, and there were families out there. So super fun. I'm sure nobody's going to miss gravel in their washing machine. So thank you for overseeing that. There's been some heavy conversations lately that I've been allowed to participate in with different people, educators. I met with a parent this morning, and it's just a heavy time. I'm so proud of our students that spoke tonight. I feel like it takes a lot of bravery to come here and speak for anybody, but when our students do, it is heard loud and clear, and I thank them for that. It just feels heavy right now. And so I'm processing, I'm here to learn, to listen, and make sure that we do better. We've all heard, when you know better, you do better. And part of knowing and getting to that point is listening and learning, and that's what I'm doing. So I think that's all. Thank you both.
Mr. Boyd?
You sure?
Okay. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Jaeger.
Nothing. Notice how this happened. The program was like, seriously? You're not going to say anything? I love it.
I'm not even buying that one.
I was just trying to be like Mr. Boyd tonight, so. You know, you all have alluded to what's on my heart a little bit tonight, and that's been that it's been a pretty heavy end to the school year. You know, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. But as I think about this school year and the work that's happened across our system, I think it's really important that, that we remember the things that have happened so well to support our students and our families across our system this year. You know, there, and I say, I say this to a lot of people, you know, in a district that serves almost 30,000 kids and 60,000 potential parents and guardians, and, you know, another 100,000 taxpayers, the averages are not always in our favor, that things are always going to go right, and we're going to get it right, make 100% perfect decisions with our staffing, or, you know, a resource we choose, or something like that. But what I can tell you, and when I go to sleep at each night, what I know, having been in the system for 16 years, is the vast, 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 I'm going to say it about 19 more times, majority of our people who are in our system are here because they love kids and they want to do the right thing for all kids. And there's examples of that every single day across our system. And that's, you know, teachers going to kids' houses to drop off homework, to, you know, bringing snacks to their own classrooms so kids are fed when they need to be fed, or the kid that just needs a high five or a hug because a teacher or a staff member realizes that they're having a tough day. Or, you know, in my own house, and you all that are parents know this, my two kids need very different things. And we have people striving every day to meet the needs of both of the kids that live in my house, and I know my kids are no exception to that. But I think it's important for people to know that there is no curtain in front of our eyes at the district level, and I'm proud of the board for this too, that we know that there's things that we can do differently, and that we know that there's things that we can do better. And, you know, as a superintendent of all kids that attends school in this district, the experiences I've had talking with many of our students of color over the last couple weeks have really been hard. And, you know, hard to hear because there's kids who deserve better from us, who deserve better from their peers, who deserve better from our community. And that's one of the things I really appreciated in our student voices tonight, is how many of them recognize that, yes, this is a school challenge that has to be solved and something we have to work on, but they also recognize that it's going to take a community effort. And, you know, I, I do have a resounding belief in our board and our staff that we do want this to be a place for all kids to be successful and feel like they're, you know, welcome and what have you. And, and that's incumbent on all of us, I think, in the work that we do each day. And, you know, sometimes it takes a group of kids to slap us in the face a little bit to say, gosh, we need something else right now. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to get to know some of the kiddos that spoke tonight just a little bit better over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, I walk away from every one of those conversations, and it helps me remember how bright our future is. You know, there's a lot of challenging things in our world right now, but, you know, I think a lot of times if we lean into our students and their expertise and hear from their experiences, that it will make us all better. So I just say that all to say that there are so many positive things about this school year and so many things that have gone well. You know, our, our seniors that graduated were offered over $50 million in scholarships. I mean, that's just incredible when you think about that. But, you know, until we have all kids in our system going to sleep at night, feeling like that this is their place and they're safe at school, we have work to do. And, you know, I, I'm, and I know our team is too. We've had a lot of conversations about this, and it's important that we get it right. And if we don't get it right, we're going to make every effort we possibly can to get it right. And I think it's important for us to publicly say that. Those are my comments tonight.
I would just add and thank you and your team. None of you got into this business to not help kids. And to your point, there are always going to be things that we can do better, and there are a lot of really great things that are happening. But, you know, sometimes things happen. But I just want to take this opportunity to personally thank you. I'm not speaking for the board. This is just me. But I think that they would agree that the hard work your team puts into these tough things, and then your, just the personal connection with kids, because I know you do that, especially in these tough times, and that's not easy to do. I just want to personally thank you publicly for that. So. Well said. First executive session?
Which time you want?
Sweet.
10 minutes. Don't believe it's five. Let's go with 10.
Hot tad, man.
10?
10, please.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing potential property pursuant to the exception for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:30.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Oh, Dr. Yurkovich, I'm sorry. I knew it was somewhere down there.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin.
That is correct. Congratulations.
Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Fifteen oh one. So, we'll move to, yeah, fifteen oh one. I'd seek a motion.
I moved that the board approved the acquisition of real property at Northeast Corner, 119th Street, and K-7 Highway. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Steele, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin.
That is correct. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Fifteen oh one. So, we'll move to, yeah, fifteen oh one. I'd seek a motion.
I moved that the board approved the acquisition of real property at Northeast Corner, 119th Street, and K-7 Highway. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Steele, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin. That is correct. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Fifteen oh one. So, we'll move to, yeah, fifteen oh one. I'd seek a motion.
I moved that the board approved the acquisition of real property at Northeast Corner, 119th Street, and K-7 Highway. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Steele, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin. That is correct. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Fifteen oh one.
So, we'll move to, yeah, fifteen oh one. I'd seek a motion.
I moved that the board approved the acquisition of real property at Northeast Corner, 119th Street, and K-7 Highway. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Second executive session.
I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Steele, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Steele, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin. That is correct. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Fifteen oh one.
So, we'll move to, yeah, fifteen oh one. I'd seek a motion.
I moved that the board approved the acquisition of real property at Northeast Corner, 119th Street, and K-7 Highway. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Second executive session. I'm trying to decide how long. Twenty, and then if we need more, we'll come back for more.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance. Okay, sorry, of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Sorry, thumbs off.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing, and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal, I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona, such a blessing, and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Lin, L-I-N-N-E-T. Lin. That is correct. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing, and really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership and choosing the books, and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walked by, they noticed the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.[802.01]
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal and I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona. Such a blessing and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of your day.
Lennon.
Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing and really focusing on building-wide expectations but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership in choosing the books and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walk by, they notice the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Lennon. Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal and I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona. Such a blessing and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of your day.
Lennon. Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing and really focusing on building-wide expectations but also creating a love of literacy. Anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five and so we're really excited.
So, the students have the ownership in choosing the books and we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so, the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership in choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get their own, like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walk by, they notice the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal and I'm still working on it. So, thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona. Such a blessing and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of your day.
L-I-N-N-E-T. Lennon.
Lennon. Congratulations. 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 Lennon. Congratulations.
Hey, what's going on Madison Place Elementary School? It's Noah Gray here. Thank you guys so much for your overwhelming support of my teammates and I as we're about to head out to Arizona to play the Philadelphia Eagles in the Super Bowl. It's really encouraging though that I have such amazing friends who care so much about me. This support is just such a blessing and I'm just so grateful to be able to read these. This cookie was absolutely phenomenal and I'm still working on it. So thank you so much for making this for me, sending it my way. But seriously, I'm super excited about getting to Arizona. It's such a blessing and hopefully we win the Super Bowl this year. Go Chiefs and have a great rest of the year.
Linnett.
That is correct. Congratulations.
Kids get golden tokens for following our four Bs of be safe, be kind, be helpful, and be the best you. And this is our PBIS initiative that we're doing. And really focusing on building-wide expectations, but also creating our love of literacy. Does anybody in our building have three tokens to give out until the end of the year? We just started two days ago, so we've already given out five, and so we're really excited.
So the students have the ownership and choosing the books. And we have like a great partnership with Junk Drawer that actually provides the books for us. And so the students get, you know, it's not something like you have to read this book, you have to do certain types, like since they have so much ownership and choosing it, that they love getting it and that they get to own like the book.
As soon as it was installed, it was great to see, I mean, every time we walk by, they notice the new book and they're all excited. And, you know, not all of them have an opportunity to bring brand-new books home. We have a wonderful library here, but this one they get to keep. And it's wonderful how excited they get for each other because they know how exciting it is to bring a brand-new book home.
Hey.